If you'll leave us in the indication. My pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. By the God, we ask your blessing on this meeting this evening. We thank you for those who give up themselves to do the work of our city. We pray your protection on those who protect us both at home and abroad, in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Everybody has a copy of the agenda in front of them. There are two changes, or actually two additions, to make to the Public Works Committee. Both of those will be handled by Doug, that one is transferring property to the county. Correct, Doug? And the second one is quoting on representation for the gas authority. And we'll get into that. So with those changes, I entertain a motion to accept the...
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. You've got in front of you minutes from previous meeting, attachment A.
I make a... There were a couple of changes to this that we noted as we were getting started here. One was we needed to add the city attorneys being present for this meeting. And also, when presiding over the meeting, that was listed incorrectly, and we needed to change that for the last month. Those are the only two things I saw. Anybody else?
My one capitalized Charles wrote last night. And I'll just leave it.
It's just to goad him though. Well, I make a motion that we approve these minutes with those changes.
Second, my counsel, Clinton. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, thank you. Motion passes. Financial statement, we have attachment B. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to look through that.
Franchise thing that George Power came in the last few weeks.
Yes, it was actually a couple of weeks earlier than last year, and up about $11,000.
Y'all had that last month?
Works. Can you hear me?
Yeah. On here, councilman.
You're saying it's not reflected in the...
Oh, yeah, it is. I just, I wasn't aware. It wasn't in the last financial last month.
No, no, no.
Federal revenues are better than total business so far, so at least we're staying within the budget and actually catching up with some things. We continue to dig out of our hole, but we are making progress with that. I make a motion to be accepted, financial statement as presented.
Second, my counsel, Parker. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We move on into citizens' delegation. Thank you, Schaefer, for Better Hometown Report.
Good evening. How are y'all?
Good.
Spring has sprung. I hope you all have your allergy medicine ready.
More like summer.
Yeah, no joke. I'm gonna try to make this brief, although I have a lot of... Anyway, on February 25th, I'll start with Pelham's Got Talent. We hosted our annual Pelham's Got Talent competition. Talent ticket sales and talk of the town rights were all the buzz. This year was a record year for the competition. We sold more tickets and raised more crowd favorite monies than in any year past, which is a big success. Also, it's opportunities like Pelham's Got Talent to re-energize a community and gain support for Pelham and citizens as a whole. Additionally, last week, I journeyed up north to Delonica, Georgia for the Main Street Institute. I'm energized to put into practice all of that, all that I learned into Pelham, and I'll let you know three high points that I feel led to share with you. One, Bruce Green from the Georgia Department of Economic Development came to speak with us. In his words, and I'm quoting, "Georgia economists, both state paid and others, are fed up," end quotes. They keep seeing business owners, both new ventures and established companies, build new facilities on major highways and out of our Georgia city limits. He said there's a cooperative effort to show business owners, tourists, and local communities that there is a lot going on in downtown. In 2011, they will be spending tens of thousands of dollars in advertising Georgia downtowns. We have got to get in this adverti... It's free advertising. We just gotta let them know what's going on in Pelham. I nominate myself to help do that. I know y'all are happy about that. In addition, I have a list of over 50 ideas, incentives, and promotions to spur traffic to our local businesses, our, and our community within our downtown district. And as we all know, in Pelham, our downtown district is probably 60, 75% of our own commerce, maybe more. So, let's put those into practice, for sure. Additionally, I kept hearing the words, "partnership, partnership, partnership." Towns all over Georgia are falling apart because Chamber of Commerce's are fighting with Main Street programs. City council members can't come together on logistical issues like where to place light posts and what have you. It's happening all over Georgia, and it's resonating down throughout these small towns where our communities are not able to sustain their citizens because they're going to the larger communities to find work and resources. So one thing that I left with was the urgency, and I think it has already started with Gusto here in Pelham, is partnership, Better Hometown Partnership in the Chamber, city council getting on board with the school systems and Better Hometown partnership with the school systems and bringing our kids involved. If I can get the little kids to think that Pelham is great, they're gonna go off to college and think Pelham's great, I'm gonna get my education back, which is exactly what my husband did, which is what brought me here, and aren't we all excited about that? Anyway, and I'm going to leave you, I want to urge everyone in the room, on April 5th, that's Tuesdays from this week, at 6:00 PM, we will be hosting our annual town hall meeting for Better Hometown to let people know of the progress that we've had over the past nine years, some of our current projects, and where we hope to go in the future. And I hope all of you can join us and learn more about Better Hometown and where we're going. Additionally, I want Pastor Michael Finn to come up. I'm gonna pass him over. As he's talking, I'll do this.
Let me say that I am honored to speak to you on behalf of the Pelham Better Hometown's Design Committee and present to you a plan that we have in work to continue with the beautification of our Pelham's hometown and our downtown area. The specifics of the proposal, I believe you are receiving right now, there are two sheets that spell out in words exactly what we're looking at doing, using the inmate labor to pick up in the specific zones. You should have received a map that looked something like this. I do apologize for the appearance of this map, but we did find that we could produce maps like this and present each of you a copy of them for just a few dollars versus getting a poster-sized map that could be professionally done for about $50. And so, we opted to be frugal rather than fancy. As you look over the materials, you see that we've divided the business district and Highway 93 between 19 and the business district into nine zones. The zones were designed with the intent that this would be what a crew of four to six could do in a four-hour period. These zones are not set in stone. If it comes to be that some are too large or too small, we can work on them and shift them so that they are manageable areas, because that was our goal in designing these zones, so that they would be manageable areas for the inmate crews to do in a four-hour period. Thank you for supporting Pelham's Better Hometown, and if you have any questions for me about this plan, I'll be glad to try to answer them. If that is close by, she could probably answer some, too.
Y'all talk, have y'all questions?
As Becca mentioned, she's been out of town all last week. We planned to get together hopefully tomorrow. I see no reason why we can't put this into practice.
Appreciate you coming up with all this.
Do we have a crew?
There has been dialogue on this before, just this meeting. I mean, they talked with Doug and tried to come up with what would be a reasonable plan, so they researched into this. I'm just, Becca gave this material to me before she left to go out of town.
The work session, we mentioned, too, that you're putting together a crew, starting to get some crews to get to some of the longer-term folks out there.
I have a concern, and the inlets to the city, the downtown part of the city, our streets go out to the city limits. No matter how good you get this downtown looking, if we don't do something about the side streets that come into the downtown part, people not gonna wanna come. We've got more trash than the law allows, spread all over. A lot of people in this room, I know there's some ladies from the garden club, pick up trash all the time. And we need some education to our citizens about that, and we probably need to put up some signs and increase the fines for littering, because it is a major problem. And to do seriously, if you put a lot of effort in downtown without the highways coming in, you're wasting your time, but people will get tired of it before they get here.
Right, and that was our reason for doing Highway 93 coming in from 19. We'd like to be able to do some of the other streets, too, but we didn't want to be overwhelming with the size of plan that we were bringing to begin with. If it works well, and city manager and chief of police think that the crew can handle more area, we'd be glad to draft a plan for a larger area.
Actually, we have a separate crew other than the one we're setting aside for this that's addressing these areas you're talking about. We discarded them about midweek last week.
Is that what you're talking about, work session, that crew?
We had the two crews before when it first got started. They were doing a good job of that, but that went the way some.
Hopefully, we'll get back into that same bracket that we started about midweek last week.
I'm asking you probably to repeat yourself, but you said that y'all anticipate each zone to be an area that a crew of four or five could do at one time frame?
About four hours. Because, you know, not being very familiar with the length of time that these crews could work, we figured they'd probably take them out after breakfast and work them till lunch, or either take them out after lunch and work them till dinnertime, the span of about four hours.
That sounds good. We appreciate you taking the initiative to get this going.
Glad to do it. Thank y'all.
And Doug, was Bruce Green that she mentioned, is that the one we know and love, or is that a different Bruce?
I wondered, too.
I wondered, too.
Verify that later on. I'm sorry.
Chamber of Commerce report, I have one sitting here.
He sent his apologies that he couldn't be here, but he provided you with a written report that was in place when you...
I won't read that, but you all can see the different things that are going on. Some things coming up April 16th, I will mention that's coming up. Wildlife pageant will be at the old high school auditorium. In May, the Chamber will participate in Relay for Life. They sell during the relay, all proceeds will be relayed to life. So those are things coming up, and in the letter, there's some things that he's just reporting on that have happened. So, it'll be here at the City Hall if anyone wants to read that. Any other comments, some Chamber of Commerce? Pelham Mitchell County Joint Development Authority, Doug, you have any?
No, I have not received a copy of that, approved minutes as yet.
Actually, I'll let something get you.
Mitchell County Development Authority, I understand she cannot shut the shower, couldn't be here?
She's out of town, she's in Atlanta.
She's planning to be here next month.
Right, in your packet, I believe I provided the report that she sent the written report.
City school system, anyone here for the school system?
Mayor, you might wanna read that paragraph about April, excuse me, in the chamber report.
Oh, the one above that, excuse me, okay. The one above why I read it.
It says April is full of events.
In recognition of the children in our community this month, okay. This is the month of the military child, military child, and the Chamber is working with the Georgia National Guard, Mitchell County Youth Advisory Council, Mitchell County Boys and Girls Club, Pelham High Middle Schools, and Better Hometown for many celebrations and tributes to our military family. Along with our annual Easter egg hunt, we will offer a half-pint heroes parade, art contest, scholarship essay contest, cards, letter, letter and comfort items to send to three divisions in Afghanistan that have troops from Mitchell County. I apologize, I didn't see that. That's good. Thank you, appreciate it. Southwest Georgia Rural, excuse me, Regional Commission, if we're gonna see her for that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you this evening on something a little, maybe less interesting, but less controversial than perhaps when I was with you last time. Passing out some maps that I'll discuss in a moment. Here this evening to talk about a couple of things, just for information's sake. The first being this map that I'm passing out. The state requires that I come out and talk to you about this, but also, I wanna talk about a couple of other things. I'll try and be as brief as possible. This first thing is in reference to the regionally important resource plan that the Regional Commission developed last year. This plan has been developed and adopted, and now I'm coming to all the local governments in southwest Georgia, that's 14 counties and 44 cities, to talk to them, what this means to them. Now, what you have in front of you is a map of the regionally important resources within the boundaries of Pelham, and some to the outside, so you can see what's on the edge around in Mitchell County. Regionally important resources are natural or cultural resources, which have been deemed to be regionally important, so they're important to more than one local government within southwest Georgia. We have the ability, as a regional commission and as a region, to determine what is a regionally important resource. The state doesn't say what is. There are a few things that they do require are in the plan, which I'll mention, but for the most part, we can determine what these things are. The staff came up with several things, nominations were taken from the citizens and governments, so everything that we, everything that people suggested was put into the plan. And within the city of Pelham, you can see primarily, the background is green. That represents prime farmland. It doesn't have such an impact on a city as it does on a county, but certainly, there's still some active agricultural fields within the city of Pelham, which, within the city, but more within the region in general, are an important economic engine to southwest Georgia. We have great land, I mean, it's prime farmland, which means that the soil is more suitable for farming than just, than regular farmland or other designations. This is the best soil to farm in. We have a great climate, so we can grow things, and we have historically, that's why people came here, and that's really one of the future things that we need to take care of, so it does last into the future. The other main thing you can see is the blue. That represents stream corridors, but also, since obviously, it's much bigger than a stream corridor, it represents the floodplains and wetlands, and developed tree stand, stands of trees around those, which create buffers that help clean the water as it drains back into the streams, and also provide animal habitat. And then, the red lines that go through, they kinda look like a printing mistake. This area is within what's designated the Red Hills area. That's the Pelham Escarpment South to Tallahassee, pretty much. It's a geological area with rolling hills, red clay soils, and historically, long-leaf pine stands. It's an important cultural and natural resource. Also, within this area, there are a couple of things that aren't shown on the map, just because it would make it even more confusing. The Floridian Aquifer is the most, one of the most productive aquifers in the world, and it's been deemed regionally important because of its import to us for water in the future, also cleaning it as well for our neighbors to the south. And wetlands and groundwater recharge areas are required by the state to be in here, but they're not shown on the map. Now, what this means to you, for each of these resources, there's been protection measures that are in the plan. So for farmland, there's several measures that are laid out to protect farmland. For water resources, there's measures that are put there to protect water resources. These are suggestions to you all. These are not requirements whatsoever. We hope that when you develop new plans, or when you undertake any major development activities that may impact one of these, that you take the considerations, you take them to heart and follow them, but there's no requirement to do that. That's all I have to say about regionally important resources. Are there any questions about that specifically? Okay, the next thing is our regional plan, which does have requirements that you are required to follow. So I wanna compare the two. The regional plan, we're in the middle of developing. This is our second regional plan. The first one created such ideas, regional activities, such as the Certified Literate Community Program, which is a program to develop literacy levels, increase literacy levels in southwest Georgia, the regional transit system, which all of the counties participate in. So there's been several ideas that came out of the regional plan, which are important to the region. We are about at the halfway mark, and we're taking public comment right now. The plan will be finished in draft form by June and adopted by October of this year. Now, what's different about this plan than plans in the past, and is important to local governments, is that at the end of this plan, it contains performance standards for local governments. In the past, there was no, it was all regional activities that had nothing to do with local governments specifically. Now it does, and I'm taking every opportunity to tell local governments about this, because it will impact you. The way it's written is in, within three years of adoption, so in October of 2014, all local governments will have to meet the minimum standard as laid out by the Regional Commission. There'll be two standards, the minimum standard and the standard of excellence. Now, these performance standards are still being developed, so there, nothing has been finalized yet. The Regional Commission and our council of directors, and the local governments will have a say in this, and they are, we've put these out for public comment. We want the public to comment on it, because we don't wanna devote these as a staff and surprise you all with it. We want you to help develop these. My take on it, since I'm driving the staff on this right now, but my commission can overrule me, you all can overrule me, is that the minimum standard will be things that you basically do already, things that you're required to by other laws to do. So we don't wanna put any additional burden on you to do things, because the stick of this is that if you don't meet the minimum standard, you'll lose your qualified local government status, which is your ability to get grants, loans, and permits from the state. So it's a big deal if you don't meet the minimum standard. We're trying to make it as easy as possible for all local governments to meet that, things like regular governmental meetings, filing your audits, things that you should be doing, and most governments are doing. We don't wanna put extra requirements on you. The standard of excellence will be things that you will have to strive for. I think that the way the law is written, it'll, if a government meets the standard of excellence, it opens doors for additional funding from the state. And I think that if you're eligible for additional funding, you might, should have to strive for it. So to get that extra funding, you may have to do extra things, but to, for business as usual, it should be that you are a shoe-in. I think a city especially like Pelham that is doing everything right, at least from an outside point of view, I don't think there'll be any problem meeting the minimum standard. Standard of excellence, like I said, everyone will have to strive for. I don't want some communities that are really seen as doing everything right to be automatic shoe-ins. I think they should work harder, just like everyone else. And the last thing I wanna mention, unless there's any questions on the regional plan. And we are taking comments on our website, you can call me if you have any comments, we wanna hear them. I want people to participate in this. Last thing I wanna mention is just services in general. The Regional Commission, I talked about some regional projects that we're working on. We also, as you know, provide services locally to individual local governments. We've assisted your Historic Preservation Commission and the Better Hometown over the time I've been with the Regional Commission. We do a lot of other things. I know we reviewed some zoning cases for you for Mitchell County as well. If you have any issues that you need some assistance with, whether it's in economic development, planning of any sort, historic preservation, even personnel, we work with personnel issues now, we have a human resource director, and we can write pay plans and things like that. If you have any needs, we would love to help you out, because that's what we do. Thank you for your time.
Anybody have questions, Paul?
On the website, is there written, written out what these changes would be, requirements will be for a sale?
They should be there. We are sending them out to all the local government. We have sent them out, the full list, the full draft list, but we're sending them out in smaller portions now, so everyone should be seeing those, I think. I don't know, Doug, if you've seen them recently, but we're sending out all the performance standards, and they should be on the website as well.
Anybody else? Thank you for coming by, I appreciate it. We discussed in our work session two weeks ago, and I mentioned to the council that I felt like we needed to recognize some organizations here in town that mean a lot to our community in a lot of ways. The first one I wanted to recognize is the Mitchell County Food Bank that's here in Pelham. And it's a tremendous group of people who spend, Pelham's is blessed to have a lot of volunteers, Pelham, Mitchell County, there's folks from all the counties that are helping with it. And we have good volunteers that have given up their time and their energy and are helping other people who are in need. I guess what, you know, we kinda thought about, too, economically right now, of course, we've had difficulties in the whole country, and everybody's having a hard time financially. And it's really important at this time, of course, that we help people who need food. And it's probably a great need, more need than usual than we've ever had, and Pelham is no exception to that. If anything, we have a fair share of that, for sure. And about five years ago or more, came with a date that it was, is that about right? There was a town meeting that was held at the old assembly room across the street. About 100 people showed up, and prior to that, there'd been some meetings, you know, there was in those meetings, I was in those meetings, Marylene Smith from Thomasville, who's been instrumental in the Thomasville, Thomas County Food Bank, was originally on this board, and she said, "You can't get it going, you can't do it unless you get a good leader to come in and run the thing, start out. You need to have a person, it's gonna be the point person to start taking it over right then." When we had the meeting, we were hoping somebody would take the ball and run with it. We knew we have, you know, I say we, I was sort of stepped back, but there was, all these volunteers were willing to do all kinds of things, and then, I wish he was here tonight, but Jimmy Gollan walked up to me and said, "I'll be the leader." And it was an answer to prayer, and he didn't even, he wasn't even aware that we'd had those meetings with Marylene, and didn't know she'd said that. So Jimmy would be the first, probably, to say, though, that it's the volunteers who made it happen, it's not me. He just helped facilitate things, but he did a tremendous job, and so have the volunteers. To that end, I wanted to read a letter that the city council, on behalf of the city council, that is written, it's, "Our city is blessed to have a large amount of compassionate and caring people who give up their time, energy, and money for others in need. The Mitchell County Food Bank has been doing this for over five years and has touched the lives of countless individuals in Pelham and Mitchell County. On behalf of the city of Pelham, I would like to thank the volunteers of the board and the board of directors of the Mitchell County Food Bank for all that they have done and will continue to do in our city. Without this organization, many would not eat. Without this organization, many would not have contact with anyone during the week. And without the food bank, there would be one less place for people to share the love of Christ with each other while helping supply basic fundamental needs. Thank you very much for what you were doing, and know that the city of Pelham stands ready to help in any way that it can to further the efforts of this food bank. With all my regards, Stephen Turner." So I'd like to present this to the food bank, and who would like to?
I'll take that, and if you'll allow me just a moment. I'd like to ask all the volunteers that are here tonight to please stand at volunteer of the food bank, everybody. It takes about 10, a crew of 10. Per, every Monday, we have 10, every Thursday, we have 10, and they are loyal and faithful volunteers, and we certainly wanna recognize and thank them for the work that they do.
Do you need more?
From time to time, we rotate. We have volunteers that stay with us for a year or two years, and then we rotate. So we have openings for substitutes, you might say.
If they're interested, how can you do it?
They can contact me, I'm in the... They can contact me, I'm in the phone, in the Camilla phone book, or they can come by the food bank on Mondays from 3:00 to 5:30, or on Thursdays from 9:00 to 1:00. So we'd be glad to talk to them at that time.
Thank you. I appreciate you. I appreciate you, like, sitting through all of this and listening to everyone.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank Billy Davis, too. He's a big worker there.
He is.
He keeps us going.
I gave Jimmy a lot of credit, but he kept Jimmy going.
That's right.
Jimmy, Jimmy, Jimmy Godwin told me, he said, "I said, 'Denny, you know, you got a wayward word, man, we need you.'" And he said, "If y'all elect me president, I'll be a part of it." So when he came back off his vacation, he was the president.
Billy has answered the phone, first, my personal phone calls to him, at least twice. Somebody's in need, Billy will drive down to them and open it up. We appreciate you, Billy. I appreciate you mentioning.
Yes, he goes beyond the college. He has snacks for everybody all the time, and he parks people to be on diets there. So he goes beyond the college.
Appreciate everybody very much, and just want to know, the city does appreciate you. Also, the, during the economic times that we've had, the city needed some help. You know, we're doing better. As James mentioned, things are looking better, and they really are. But it was tight. It's been tight for us. And I wrote an article in the paper and asked anybody who could just to help out with, you know, the streets, or whatever needs to be cleaned, or anything, just to help out because our crews, we didn't have the work crews like we had. We couldn't afford to do that. And it wasn't, it was less than a week, I got a phone call from Michelle saying, "Garden Club wants to come help." We do all kinds of stuff. I'm sorry, I didn't want to.
Don't put me on the spot.
But, and it was already happening before anyway. The Garden Club was already doing a lot of things, but it just became obvious to me how important this group of ladies is to this town. And we appreciate you very much. And here recently, and in a minute, Nancy, I want you, if you will, just to say briefly kind of what's going on with the library, but there's been a new effort from the Garden Club to really help out with the Pelham Carnegie Library. But I want to read this letter to the Garden Club, and it says, "Pelham is very fortunate to have strong civic organizations and committed volunteers that help whenever there is a need. The Pelham Garden Club is such an organization, it's, it has been an asset to this city for decades. On behalf of the City of Pelham, I thank the Garden Club for its efforts towards the beautification of our city. I also thank the club for its efforts to keep our downtown area and parks clean and its ongoing projects that make this a better place to live. When the City Council asked for help during these difficult budget times, the Garden Club did not hesitate, but jumped in helping with not only beautification and upkeep, but also a large effort to maintain and protect the future of our Carnegie Library. I want to thank you for what you are doing here and encourage you to keep going. Your work in Pelham is evident and appreciated very much. May others see your example and join in making this special place even better." With all my regards, Stephen Turner. And so I'd like to give this to Nancy, if you can. Tell a little bit about what's going with the library, if you can, or just...
Sure, thank you. Peggy Turner, no Peggy, no. Presented an idea to the Garden Club because she recognized a need at the Carnegie Library for help in the upkeep of the facility. And, and that's a part of the Garden Club philosophy, is to improve the quality of life here in Pelham. And if we can do that by helping make the library more beautiful, then we will do that. And we had a special work day where we just got out all of our elbow grease and cleaned floors and stairs and dusted and cleaned out the closet. We ready the upstairs area for gatherings and parties. We cleaned the kitchen. And then after a long day of work, we all sat together and decided to go ahead and get the carpet cleaned and the floors downstairs cleaned, and that has been done. And we invite all of you to go by the library and see what, what has been done. We organized the books that are for sale in the foyer, put new light bulbs in so people could actually see what was for sale, and I think they've had some good sales since then also. So we were really excited about it and plan to kind of keep up with them. We've also done some work on the yard outside and just encourage all of you to, to stop by and see what good things are happening.
Scott's loving it.
Good.
And all the ladies who are on the Garden Club, if you would stand.
I see some that have to stand twice.
I know. I appreciate you all.
Chester is a mess.
And you all are more than welcome to stay, but if you'd like, you can leave as well.
You all, if I show up, we'll be like... Can't me again, boy. I said, "You can't me." I'll go before I'm gonna get all your... I'm trying to get y'all before y'all go out there. I'm trying to get you.
She could stay on those. She's got a child. 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 Of course, we don't beat it. It's Mary. Yes, Mary. Hi. Yes, I know. Yes, sir.
I appreciate you all. Let us do that. Administration Committee, Councilman Brown, if you want to.
We have a attachment C, with regular, departmental report, fire department report, code enforcement, animal control report. Remember, our board is report, we have around nine, 259 inmates. That's a good number. Just being, called Bernie, see, we know they have a lot of calls, so I find, I want to recognize our, first responders, I know that, I seen my, I know they work real good, the jobs, they, sometimes we have, kind of like recognize. We have a lot of calls going into the fire department, all of Bernie going. Code appointment, we have a spring wide, spring citywide cleanup scheduled for April the 11th through the April 15th. We've got a spring wide city cleanup. And our city safety team, we held February, March. And one of the big things that we can really see improvement of this over near property is being cleaned up, lots of what you do in the area. Animal Control made 20 trips to Pelham, they got four animals.
One very successful, was it?
Anybody else have a name?
We called Animal Control because we had five dogs in our little park behind City Hall here. I witnessed they, they had about five employees, one per dog, doing their best to catch them. And they, they left that day without any animals to take back with them, too, but they really put the effort forward to, to catch them. It was a difficult situation with them scattered in every direction.
They used to, they used to do it long range.
Yeah, long time ago. It was an easier time then.
Moving right along, we have two appointments to the Pelham, Mitchell County Development Authority. And these two young people have been, have been asked, and they did accept. This time, we'd like to motion to appoint Ronnie Dudley and Jimmy Gluton to the Pelham, Mitchell County Development Authority, term beginning April 3rd, 2011, and ended April 3rd, 2014. This is a motion.
Second, my husband, Parker. Motion made by Councilman Brown. Any discussion? Ronnie would really appreciate being called a young leader.
Yeah.
That's true. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Wish passes.
I'm getting the word, I appreciate it.
If I can, I do think we need to just state the appreciation for the two that they are replacing. Jimmy Godwin and Larry Frosting have both been on this commission since we first put it together, just take on this hand building project. They have put many hours and a lot of effort into carrying this project this far. And I know that they still have a love for the project, but at the same time, we're very happy to see somebody else taking on a little bit of what's going with that. But it is a project that's continuing to do forward, and we really just want to, you know, thank them for, for the time they have put in because it has been a lot of work.
Here we have a attachment D, National Boy and Girl Club Week Proclamation. I read it. Proclamation, National Boy and Girl Club Week 2011, where as young people of Pelham, Mitchell County are tomorrow legalists, and where as many of such young people need professional youth services to help them cope with wide range of social and financial hardships, and where as most of these boys and girls, boys and girls, come to the club directly out of school and enjoy a productive afternoon and activities, and where as the boys and girls organization in our state ensure that our young people keep off the streets, offering them a safe and supportive place to go and provide them with quality programs, and where as the staff and volunteers at the local Boys and Girls Club are committed to helping the club members acquire the skills they need to be happy, successful, and productive adults. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Pelham do hereby proclaim March 20 through March 26, 2011, as a Boy and Girl Club Week in Pelham, Georgia, and call on all citizens to join with us in recognizing and commending the Boy and Girl Club in Mitchell County for providing comprehensive, effective services to the young people in our community. The resolution duly adopted by the mayor and the city council of the city of Pelham the 21st day of March 2011. Out of the motion that we have submitted proclamation for the National Boys and Girls Club Week 2011.
I'll say that.
Second, my Councilman Davis. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, thank you.
Did you have something else?
I did. I have one really exciting thing that I forgot to mention.
Sure.
I'm sorry. Speaking of the hand building, I have set up three appointments or something to that nature for people to come and visit Pelham, and I'm going to show them the community. One is the development, okay, some regional economic development coordinator for the University of Georgia, who has his hand on many, many, many students of the University of Georgia to come and look over Pelham. One is a private consultant that works doing mostly audits with major, the major 500, Fortune 500 companies in the state of Georgia. And one is the Historic Preservation Chairman, one of the Historic Preservation Society's chairman for the, for the whole state of Georgia, to come and look at what he dubs one of Georgia's unfortunate white elephants, and that is the hand trading company. But all of these should take place within the next three months. One date is actually already set. So that was from my conference, promoting Pelham and getting people just to come in. And when they, those do happen, I will be letting everybody know so that we can advertise, advertise, advertise our fair city. So I'm very sorry I forgot that, I'm not earlier.
That's good. Just keep us posted on them.
Yes, very much. I think that's very exciting, very exciting that I even got to rub those elbows and had voice for Pelham, and they said, "Hey, let's go see us."
Yeah, I appreciate that, Becky. That's great.
Trying, trying.
Thank you.
Public Works, do you want to transfer property?
Yeah. Actually, I have nothing to cover. I'm referring two items to Doug.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. These items came in today or mailed and delivered to me. I have two items I need the council to vote on. The first being the transfer of a 1987 International S Series F-2275 truck. I won't read the VIN number, but I have it on the document. What this is, this is a tractor that pulls a trailer, if you call those a semi tractor. We, this is surplus to the city's needs. We have two of them, and one of them is in very good operating condition. We use it frequently to haul a flatbed, but we had one that was in need of repair, that the county came and looked at and said they would really like to have it if the city would transfer it to them. And I checked with the chief, and he checked with the federal program because we, we've got these at no cost to the city to begin with. And approval has been given from the federal people to transfer it to the county of the councils of desire. So I'm recommending to transfer that in need of motion and vote.
I like the motion. We transfer.
Second, my Councilman Brown, any other discussion on that? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Second item, received in the mail, the municipal gas authority of Georgia concerning the two members of the council who have been appointed as members of the election committee representatives. Those are the mayor and myself, and it's time to either reappoint the mayor and myself or two new members to that. And what this is, you have the rights to vote and policy changes and all that the municipal gas authority may put forward, and have a resolution for that. So, again, I only received this today, but it needs to be taken care of.
I'll read, I'm the mayor and the city manager.
Second, my Councilman Parker. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you.
I need to read the resolution. Part of the minutes, be resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Pelham that Mayor Stephen Turner and city manager Doug Westbury is hereby appointed to serve as the city's voting delegate on the municipal gas authority of Georgia's election committee with authority to cast all votes to which the city is entitled. Actually, the mayor is the key, holds the key position there, and I would be the alternate to the mayor, and I'd be able to cast the vote. So resolve this 21st day of March 2011. That's, that's all the business for the Public Works Committee.
Okay, Doug, you got any, city manager's report?
Right, earlier I said that things are getting better for us financially, and I wanted to put some figures out there. I compared the fiscal year, July through February, comparing our figures this year to last year, and I am very happy to report that almost every category shows an increase. Be more specific, the other financing sources such as interest income is up 16% over the same time last year. Our sale of surplus equipment and seizure of, and sale of surplus equipment, this is drug seizures and that sort of thing, we're up 54% in that category. The miscellaneous revenue, this is rental from places like the hot dog stand, timber harvesting, jail phone commission and food commission and that sort of thing, we're up 8%. Donations were up 38%. Taxes were up 19% over the same time last year on our collection of taxes, and this includes not only property taxes, but alcohol tax, hotel motel tax, and you remember... includes not only property taxes, but alcohol tax, hotel motel tax, and you remember, all of that was down across the board considerably at this time last year. Our, our license and permits are down 15%, but April 1st is the final day for paying your free business license and all, not paying late, so maybe people are waiting till the last minute to pay that. In the general fund, the biggest increase of all, who probably can guess, is our total charges for services, which include our sanitation fees and inmate. And we are 103% greater than we were at the same time last year on that. Even our water, gas, and sewer are up. Water revenues are up 5%. Sewer revenue, 6%. And other revenues such as gas are up 11%. The only thing that is down is, and it's only down 2%, our fines and forkages. Those are down 2%. We're not writing as many tickets as we were, but, you know, we have fewer people speeding through town and running stop signs and this sort of thing, which is the goal we have set anyway, to have less of that occurrence. It's not a bad thing to see a negative two in that.
Amen to that. Well, that's a great report, Doug, and we appreciate all you, John, all the chiefs, John, all the staff, city's done to make that possible.
Thank you, thank you kindly. Appreciate everyone's patience with us too, but in each, each week, we are, we're showing an increase every week. Also, can't talk about the increase without talking about the audit. We have a very favorable report from Edward Blaha, the Director of the Department of Audits and Account in Atlanta. And there's four items that you want to have none noted or have the answer no to, and we scored 100% on all of those. Items considered material which need to be corrected and resubmitted, there were none noted. Items cited in prior year which needed to be corrected, resubmitted, none noted. Items requiring correction on future reports, none noted. Items regarding compliance with state law, one of the biggest matters, none noted. So I'm very happy with that. We, we may not have had a lot of money to deal with, but we handled it correctly as far as the state audit department is concerned. I'm very happy to report that. Last thing I want to report, thanks to Councilman Brown for staying behind me on this, but we have finally made some progress at Francis Davis Park in erecting basketball goals. It was a year and a half ago, we had the concrete slab board, and it's taken this long to get to the basketball goals, but other than to get out in a roller skate, it really could use the slab. Late last week, we did put the big metal poles up, the goals and backboards and all go on, but the instructions tell us that we should wait seven days before we attach those items, letting the concrete set up and all, so.
I wondered about that, because I rode by Saturday and saw them, and said, "We're in the backboard."
And we used the best they have. I mean, these are very solid, extra heavy duty, and hopefully they'll last a long time. But sometime this week, we will have the backboards and goals and the nets up. Ike McCook from the Recreation Department is going to provide us with some stencils so we can paint the lines and all. We'll be doing that as well, so. Be able to hear the young people and adults alike having some fun playing basketball over Francis Davis Park.
They got a child at Capitol Park for...
You might have part of the health program for the council then. Unless there's any questions, that's all I have, Mr. Perry.
Challenging on 101. I'd take after them. He looks a little agile somehow.
I want Reginald to be on my team.
Yeah.
All right, uh, city attorney?
I don't have a report, more than an observation, I guess if we, I think we're all glad to see that splash passed during the month of March, you know, as Becker was saying, we were all working together, and I think that's a big asset. The school system was a big asset to us. And also, City Kirk managed to have an election, and I'd have to print ballots on, congratulate her. The city did have an election, but I think they were both uncontested, and so it's just nice to have a full slate of Board of Education members, because I think we've gone a couple of three years with some vacations, so I was very gratified to see that. So I was very glad to see the splash and go with the weather, if that benefits the city, I think, we're all in here. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. I don't have any more report I can talk about tonight, so. Unless anybody has anything else, I want to take a motion that we adjourn.
That's your own, Jack. I said, it's my favorite one. I'll take the motion we adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor, raise your hand.